Good evening. I'd like to call this meeting the York City Planning Commission to order. May we have a roll call?
Johnson.
Here.
Velez.
Here.
Burgos.
Here.
Davis.
Here.
Wolf.
Here.
Gaines.
Here.
Moore.
Here.
It's noted we have a quorum. Minutes from the previous meeting, is there a motion to adopt?
Motion to adopt?
Second.
Any further deletions, additions, changes?
Who said that?
Me.
Hearing none. Roll call, please.
Johnson.
Aye.
Velez.
Aye.
Burgos.
Aye.
Wolf. Davis.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Gaines.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Motion approved. Did everybody receive their resounding hearing board email? Okay. Any unfinished business? Any new business? Hearing on our first cases, 7.1.1 Land Development, 500 West College Avenue. Staff have anything to add?
No, I think we have everyone's review letter. There's a whole lot of different things we need to discuss tonight. There are all the motions to do, just the different items all in there for discussion and comments.
Good evening.
Hello. Joe Stein with Warehouse. We're the civil engineering firm for the project. The owner's rep will be here shortly. He's coming from Lancaster, a little tied up in traffic. So what this is here before you this evening is a subdivision, lot consolidation, and land development plan for the redevelopment of the Densply campus. So this is roughly the properties at 500, 550, 570 West College Avenue, both the north and south sides of that, and then east and west sides of Grantley Avenue. Or Grantley Road. And so what the applicant seeks to do here is convert the existing very large former office and industrial spaces that were the Densply Company into residential lofts. So there's very little that's to be done really with the exterior, looking at this land development plan, really some parking enhancements, some utility improvements. There will be some restoration efforts to gain some historic tax credits in converting these buildings back to their historic nature. And so we're really excited about that, really excited to be reintroducing a large residential population down there along the Cudores Creek. As part of this, we're also doing some lot cleanup. There's a lot of parcels that Densply acquired over the years, but never consolidated. So on the north side where we have some existing parking lots, we have pieces of like land where there's five, six, seven different parcels. We're going to consolidate those into one or two just for tax purposes. It's just a general cleanup that we're really seeking to have done there so that it's just not not all chopped up like it was historically. We do have one waiver that we have before you. That is a waiver of the preliminary plan requirements. We feel that this plan is simple enough to go ahead right to a final subdivision land development plan. We do have an NPDS permit associated with this because there will be a phase two in the future that will see some more some more development on the campus and some of the vast spaces of parking, former parking area because of their single and complete project process. We have to do an NPDS permit now. That will be an individual NPDS permit because there were some areas that will be, were identified as contaminated. So there will be an Act Two EPA permit for this site as well. But that'll all be appropriately dealt with. It's not anything of major concern because it's going to be handled appropriately. So that's being handled with York County Conservation District, MPADEP as well. We're in receipt of staff's letter from February 3rd, happy to discuss their concerns with you this evening. There's really nothing in here that we believe is of significant concern. I think everything can be and has practically been already addressed. So with that, I'll pause and answer any questions. Do you have or address the items that staff had mentioned that they'd like to discuss?
For those who may not be familiar, could you name and the permit you're waiting on?
The NPDS permit? That's the National Pollution Discharge Elimination System. That is required for construction activities that disturb over one acre of earth throughout the duration of a project. So because this is phased, in phase one, we have probably roughly a half acre of disturbance, cutting in some utilities, doing some landscape islands, new landscaping, creating some areas out for accessible parking to ensure that it meets all current standards. So we're under an acre, but phase two will disturb more than one acre. And so again, because of the processing of how Conservation District and DDP require things, we had to apply for that permit now.
Are both of those phases in the main property? Or it doesn't account the exterior parking lot, right?
Eventually it will. That'll be phase two. The exterior parking lots will be developed in phase two, and that'll be a separate land development plan.
Okay. And you do not have any issues with the points that were brought out in the letter?
What did you ask Mike? I'm sorry. What did you ask? I missed that.
I asked if he has any, he did not have any.
Your microphone's on.
Yes.
Okay. What was that?
If he did not have any issues with the letter that was received.
So just to update you a little bit further, everything in the, outside of College and Grantley will be privately owned and maintained by the development team. So nothing here is going to be the responsibility of the city. We are working with PA American Water on the sewer and working with York Water on the water, trying to find the locations and sizes and materials of all these old, old pipes. Has proven to be a little bit challenge, a little bit of a challenge. We're working to identify what capacity may have been, not necessarily reserved, but what kind of usage there was from a sewer and water perspective, from the Densply, and how that translates to what was already accounted for in the system and what we're going to be adding. I think we're ready at like 178 units coming online, but this is a former facility that had hundreds of employees. And so the usage is, will be kind of similar, but there's still definitely some planning to be done to accommodate for the residential use of this going forward.
Can you remind me, is there a stormwater retention plan involved?
No, in phase one, there is not. In phase one, we're kind of just doing some minor cleanup for some inlets or something that maybe are failing on site or need rerouted for some utility purposes. Because there's no new real construction exterior, we are not doing any stormwater management. The site has significant expanses of impervious currently between the buildings and the parking lots that are out there. There is stormwater conveyance, and that will somewhat be improved, but we really don't get into any stormwater design until the future phases when some other different developments occurs here on site.
So Mike, if I could just chime in on something quickly. The main concern here was basically with the zoning ordinance comments because, as you know, they've already been in front of zoning. But when they were in front of zoning the first time, it was conveyed that they would have, the commercial space would be storage, a storage unit just for the tenants of the property, of the 500 West College Avenue, other lofts. So since that time, it now is, there is a brew pub that is for a commercial spot and also a gym which will be open to the public. And the storage, which we don't know whether or not it's going to be strictly for the tenants of the lofts. So there's, that's when now, the parking now becomes public rather than private. So, you know, do they have enough, you know, they thought they would have enough spaces coming into it. It's, so as it stands right now, it's, sorry. I wanted to just look at this one thing. So it's like, so the plans that they give now is a million overlay of the parking lot with a lot of reconfigured spaces and green spaces added. So, you know, they, it could be a nonconformity, but it would be, the end result would be, the end decision would be up to the zoning officer as to, you know, how the reconfiguring of the parking. And now, you know, with the amount of spaces, anytime when you have a multifamily conversion of something, and now you got to share it with, share the parking spaces with the commercial space as well as the residential spaces.
So is that for the entire project or just for the commercial building?
So it's with the commercial buildings and the lofts, the townhomes will have their own parking. They're going to have their own garages with them as well. But because it kind of changed from what it was initially when they first came to zoning, that's when the zoning ordinance comments came into play.
I would argue that the zoning ordinance doesn't discriminate versus public versus private use for uses. I think what we can do, and I think we utilize Traffic Planning and Design, so if I refer to TPD, that's our traffic consultant. They prepared a parking analysis looking at the units proposed and the uses proposed. And because the ordinance doesn't discriminate between public versus private, I believe their counts would be accurate. And we were overparked. I know we were making some tweaks to the parking to, and we actually picked up some spaces because of the concerns with the angled parking. But I don't think that anything that's shown on the plan currently would require another trip back to the zoning, zoning hearing board.
Do you, do you have that TPD report as of yet, or?
That had been submitted back to the zoning officer months ago.
Was it actually the report or just a traffic summary?
That was the, that was the parking analysis. So TPD is now working on a traffic impact study of the full development and looking how that impacts the road network more from a trip generation standpoint of what the introduction of the residential uses and the commercial uses here in this, in this conversion and how, you know, what that interaction is. But the parking study has been provided for, for the review back earlier in '24.
So, okay, and the other thing was they are currently asking to take 11 parcels and do a reverse subdivision to seven. So if that's the case, and they're going to leave it at seven versus one, then lot coverage will come into play as well. They're not going to meet the lot coverage with the seven parcels.
So that would be?
In the EC zoning district.
Yeah, that would be an existing non, continuation of an existing nonconformity because if we have six parcels and none of them meet when we combine to one, that one does not meet. So I don't know if that's a zoning officer's determination that relief is needed for that continuation of an existing nonconformity or if it would just be?
Are you, are they planning on taking it all the way down to one parcel?
Just as shown on the lot consolidation plan. So we have?
11 parcels into seven.
Correct, but on LD, beginning on SLD four, for instance, at our one northern parking lot, we are taking six parcels and taking it down to one. On SLD five, we're taking four parcels to one. On SLD six, we're creating two parcels from the one property. And then on SLD seven, we are taking one to two.
We're at six if I, if I'm sitting here counting on my fingers correctly, I was trying to keep up.
No, that one goes to, I'm sorry, three lots, lot seven there. So we have seven lots.
Right. Then that's what I said, 11 into seven. So with the seven lots, and this is just, we're, we're just having a discussion this evening. Obviously, they're going to have to come back to planning, but in a discussion. And once Joe and his team has had an opportunity to really answer all of the review questions that are on there from us, CS Davistown and York County Planning Commission, you know, all of them have been satisfied, then they're going to come back and you can make motions on that. But these are the things we just wanted to point out. So we, we thought at first, you know, maybe, but there is no reason why they can't go to one, even with the Grantley Road in between there. So.
But we're not looking at doing just one overall lot.
Right. So if they do seven, then you're not going to meet, you're not going to?
And our plan will be set up so that the seven lots are viewed for compliance from, from, from the guidance of the zoning ordinance in the EC district, which the zoning relief that we got was to allow residential use in the EC district. So the EC district, as is presented in the zoning ordinance, does not specifically allow for residential use. It doesn't have provisions for residential use. So we're, we're kind of treading a fine line there. But we did get that zoning relief and we are also now, you know, so we'll look at every lot and how it conforms or doesn't conform, but I guess it would be a zoning officer's determination if, if we need zoning relief from lots that already don't conform. So when we take a handful of lots that exist, noncompliant with your zoning ordinance, and we combine them into one, and it doesn't conform to the zoning ordinance, does that require zoning relief?
My, but you're not combining it into one. You're combining it into seven, taking it from 11 to seven.
Correct, but we're taking, but for each lot, we have to analyze each lot. We don't have one lot. We have seven lots. But when I'm taking six to one and three to one, I need to look at that one lot that we combined seven times.
Math, yep. Okay. So this is just, you know, like I said, it's discussion for right now.
I might be missing something, but why is it discussion, like, there's nothing we can do with it right now, right? So like, what are, why is the discussion happening here, like?
Well, it's sort of so that the original, so that we can discuss this as a whole board this evening. And then when they come back to the next meeting, we'll be ready to take some motions on some different actions here.
Okay.
It's kind of like, it's kind of like even though they've been in front of you for zoning, they have not yet been in front with this project for, for planning.
I get that. It's just, it seemed like the two things that were in major contention, as I'm gathering, are matters of interpretation of things and figuring things out, which is not like, that's not what we do up here. We are like, does this conform with where the city's trying to go as opposed to what is a nonconforming lot being combined into a nonconforming lot? And is that required? Like, that's not what we do.
So it is, sort of. I mean, because, so all these review questions, it is a decision up to, well, at the end of the day, Monty will have the decisions on some of the parking things and that sort of thing and nonconformity. But it is your decision as to whether or not, you know, it gets a motion and whether it gets moved on to city council for, you know, conditional approval or you guys approve it or whatever. So we just wanted to bring it up for discussion tonight. You know, obviously, there's not going to be decisions made tonight. But it's out there for you. And, and they're asking for a waiver for the preliminary, which is, that's like normal, you know, to waive the preliminary land development subdivision.
So that would be appropriate at this time, then, the waiver?
Correct, but we can't just send it through with just the one waiver on there. So that's what I'm saying.
No, he wants a waiver from preliminary to final, right?
Correct. I don't need action on that necessarily. I mean, I would love to have come in this evening and had action and then dealt with some of the other issues, but understanding that there is concern with the zoning, we'll have to, I guess, revisit that. But no, I don't necessarily need action on the waiver. I mean, unless you all tell me that there's a new policy in place where we're not going to approve preliminary plan waivers, then I'd be concerned. But I think historically speaking, the board has favored that waiver.
We'd love to see you again.
I don't think I've ever seen it happen in two different meetings. That's, usually they come in, you have the full plan, everything's addressed, preliminary, we give the preliminary, we give, I know what goes on. And that's why I'm confused here because I've never seen this like, oh, we're just discussing the points of the case.
So we have, and even back to when I sat on the planning commission, we have, and magnitude,
Never here.
Projects of this magnitude, some of them, how many times did the, the well span come through? Back through like four, like three or four times. So when it is a big project.
Policy in spring, it's very, we have to go to two. Don't do that, please.
Right, right. I mean, typically.
So, yeah, I mean, is there, so opening it up to the board, I mean, is there anything with the project or within the staff's, you know, letter that you have questions, concerns about that we could address here this evening so that when we do come back in the future, it can be hopefully a quick, quick approval?
And you will address, you will send a letter addressing the comments, correct?
You know it.
I know. I'm just asking, but I knew.
No, you're good. Yeah, I mean, we've already started addressing these. We'll probably utilize clients, the applicant's legal counsel to work with the zoning officer on, on this parking situation and then the continuation of existing nonconformities.
When, as a former commissioner, you probably understand our questions.
Yep.
Yeah. Anyone else have questions? Thank you for your time.
Thanks, Joe.
Our next case is 5-2025-Z-S-E-V, 1239 Roosevelt Avenue. First, we'll hear from staff and we'll ask the applicant to step forward.
Applicant owner is saying Dean's List Realty LLC, 298 Kings Mill Road, York 817401. Zoning district is EC, the employment center district. The summary of the applicant is requesting a variance from relief from the expansion of an existing nonconformity, a variance for dimensional requirements of new proposed parking, a variance for rear setback of an existing nonconformity, and a variance for side setbacks of an existing nonconformity. Variance appeal one, applicant seeks a variance for an upward addition onto an existing motel. A nonconforming structure may be altered provided the alter, the alterations conforms with all dimensional requirements of this ordinance and all other applicable regulations of this ordinance as defined in section 1306.01.01, point C, point two, see in section 1304.1, point one, point zero two, point zero zero two. Staff have reviewed the variance provision for this property. Therefore, staff recommends the denial of the request for a variance to alter the nonconforming for the structure at 1237 through 1239 Roosevelt Avenue as it does not meet all applicable regulations of this ordinance. Variance appeal two, the applicant seeks a variance for dimensional requirements of new proposed parking as defined in section 1309.3, point zero three, D. Staff have reviewed the variance provision for this property. Therefore, staff recommends the knowledge of requests for a variance for dimensional requirements for a new proposed parking for the structure at 1237 through 1239 Roosevelt Ave as it does not meet all applicable regulations and the disorderness. Variance appeal three, the applicant seeks a variance for rear setback as defined in section 1303.14. Staff has reviewed the variance provision for this property. Therefore, staff recommend the now of the, of the rear setbacks for the structure 1237 through 1239 Roosevelt Ave as it does not meet all applicable regulations of this ordinance. Variance appeal four, the applicant seeks a variance from side setbacks as defined in section 1303.14. Staff have reviewed the variance provision for this property. Therefore, staff recommend the now for the side setbacks for the structure at 1237 through 1239 Roosevelt Ave as it did not meet all applicable regulations of this ordinance and hardship is not proven as property line could be extinguished.
Good evening. Would you provide your name for the record, please?
Good evening, Ross Dean.
Could you give us some more information on what you're planning here?
Excuse me. About a year, almost two years ago, submitted blueprints on the building to tear the roof off and build up on the existing rear building. At the time, went through several meetings. This building has been here before I was born years ago. It's been Spatero's Motel. And at the time of the meetings, they said that the lot, the way things were done back in the day, they wasn't actually done correctly, and the property spans between two lots. So with the new setbacks and new requirements, the property now is nonconforming. So I was told, come to the meeting in order to get approval for the multiple nonconforming uses to move forward with the construction.
So basically, you're looking to add a second floor to that building?
Correct. Second and third, correct.
Did you say the building itself spans two different lots?
Correct.
Why weren't they just combined?
Probably because the setbacks are against, at least the back setback.
Correct.
Have you looked into combining these two lots into one?
Yes, I spoke to a lawyer. They said they're considered two tracks and not two parcels. And he said in definition, two tracks is still one parcel, but we are looking forward to changing it, but it doesn't change the fact that it's still only close to the rear. So he said regardless of that, both, both properties are fairly close to the rear, even though it's one building.
Would the two separate lots affect the setbacks that we're looking at tonight?
Yes.
How?
Well, the way they said it is, I forget how they said it in the meeting. Yeah, how it was worded in the meeting.
So what, so what happens is that previously, there was, I believe, if I'm, correct me if I'm wrong, a surveyor that it's almost completed to extinguish the lot line. If he extinguishes the lot line, then the side setback doesn't become an issue. The rear setback, it is because it's, that's the way it was. That's the way it always was. So it's not, I mean, he needs to get relief from that, but he can show hardship for the rear one because it was like that originally. The side one, he can get relief, I mean, he could, it doesn't, he doesn't show hardship because he can get the lot line extinguished. And the parking spaces and the other, just the actual, he actually needs a variance for the expansion or an alteration of a existing nonconformity. So it's just, you know, with the side setback is where he can extinguish the lot line. And Mr. Dean, did you ever get the situation cleared up with the neighbor?
Correct.
So.
The property sits, I think, two feet from the rear, and it's 15, I think the code calls for 15 feet.
Right, but I mean, do you get your parking situated with your neighbor with the existing, is it a furniture building? Furniture store there? Because she was asking about that. So you actually, those are your parking spots?
Correct.
Okay.
Do you see an increased demand for rooms?
Yes, very high. I currently have three motels and probably around 40 places. And I have probably a hundred person waiting list for motel rooms because they're affordable. Most people can't manage their finances, so we kind of help people manage those things so they get on their feet, provide positive notices for landlords and help them kind of rehabilitate themselves and get back into society.
So these are more or less longer term?
Correct.
What is the, what is the variance for dimensional requirements of new proposed parking? What's the problem with the parking?
The current parking is shy about, I think they're 17 and it has to be 18. They're foot, the current, the parking lot is already striped, but they're a foot short of what the new dimensions of the parking would be.
Oh, the width of the parking spaces or?
The length and the width, yes.
Are there any other questions? Anyone from the public that would like to address this case? Could you step forward and provide your name, please?
Good evening. My name's Charmaine Nyman. I'm an attorney with the law firm of Barley Snyder, and I'm here this evening on the neighboring property owner that the miss has spoken about earlier. Their, their name are Carol and Marvin Schroll. They own the property adjoining at 1231 Roosevelt Avenue. They do regret they were unfortunately able to be present. I'm sorry, what was the address? I'm sorry. Yeah, 1231 Roosevelt Avenue. It's the adjoining property with that furniture and discount store that you were referencing. And they do regret they were unable to be here this evening. We do have some questions on the lot line. We're currently having a survey done. We do believe that there is a discrepancy in where the lot line is placed on the plan. And so I just wanted to clarify that there is still some concerns there. And I recognize that's a private matter, but we are having a survey done and, and we're just looking to confirm where that lot line is because on the plans where it's depicted, we believe that that's actually on our client's property and the lot line should be, and I apologize, I don't know how many feet, but we believe that the lot line is more appropriately where the telephone poles are on that plan. I'm happy to answer any questions. I just wanted to clarify that because I know that it was raised about the neighbor and the concern of the parking.
And that's the adjoining on the rear, right?
No, I'm sorry. It's adjoining, it'd be on the right, the side.
And is that the side that you were saying?
South, it's, it's on the south side. And if you look on, I think on the drawings, there's like this big billboard that's like almost like right on the building you're referencing.
The top of the page.
So it's, yeah, this, that's what they were talking about, the discrepancy.
It's the billboard and it's that parking area itself.
And there's six spots.
Assuming this is what this means, I'm very confused.
They unfortunately just haven't been able to survey the property yet. The surveyor looking at our deed has said that they do believe that the parcel that we are questioning is in our deed. And I apologize, we just had this for a couple of days and we've been trying to move as quickly as possible before the hearing here this evening. But I just wanted to raise that since it was brought up.
And just to clarify, do they have any opposition to the plan? I mean, obviously if the, the deed lines are fixed and everything, but it wouldn't change the back setback of the building because it's not up against their property or anything like that?
No, it would not change the back setback. I believe it would change the parking concern.
We have a driveway and that driveway to pull into our spots, that's currently there, they're saying a portion of that driveway is theirs. So they're saying that, oh, that driveway was only given to us prior to this or whatever reason and that driveway is actually their property.
So this section right here is under question?
Yes, yes, on the side of that, not the rear. So it's not, not the building, not the building itself.
But the driveway right here?
Yes, there's a driveway that comes straight up there.
So here's a question. It is, what, 39 units, something like that?
Something like that.
How many parking spaces would that require? Roughly? Because there's 72 marked on this map.
Fifty-eight and a half.
So.
One and a half, it's be fifty-eight and a half.
Is it 1.5?
Let me pull out, no, it's different.
How many are along that road?
So it's last or?
It's a motel and it's in the EC zoning district. So, hold on. Sorry, I wasn't, I'm trying to look for our.
Meanwhile, if that property line moved, how many parking spaces as they are currently drawn would be lost?
So we, that parking line, we actually drive through there to pull into our spot. So there's about.
I was just gonna say, I'm sorry, I didn't know if it affected the number of parking spots.
Yeah, so driving in, she said that curb cut, whoever was driving in, that would affect, they tend to our spots or maybe even more, like 12 or 13 along that.
Plus then it would also, would it not also affect the flow, the, with him being able to access it through that drop, what he says is his driveway?
We have two other cuts and one, with those two was going in and then we have one leaving. So then we only have one going in and one curb cuts.
So, hold on, because I'm, I'm just looking up, because we've had several pre-development meetings with Mr. Dean on this property.
They would still have 56 parking spots even if they lost all of those. So I don't really think it's a problem as soon as we get this answer.
Because if you remember, we spoke about the existing telephone poles, curb cuts may need to be shifted.
Yes, we've spoken about changing the pole, but of course, we don't have any plans reviewed. We've submitted the plans, but they haven't been reviewed and we have to move past it since two years and almost three years that submitted everything.
So, so what's in question right now would be your new spot?
Yes.
Okay, so, so his current spots are, are conforming. It's the new spots that are not conforming to, to what?
And we only.
Oh.
Something like, I think it's like one and a quarter spots, we need one per unit.
I believe it's one per unit and then I believe, I believe I read that it was one per unit plus one per 400 square foot.
Oh, yes, correct.
Yeah. I guess space.
Use space, use.
So in order to, oh, I'm sorry, in order to him, for him to, to, how do I say, for the parking to not have to be an issue, well, not with their, with the dispute over where it is, would be to reduce the number of, number of rooms in his expansion.
Well, that's absurd. So when we could give a variance for the number of parking spots, because even with the current number that he shows on here, if he lost that entire row, he would still have 56 parking spots for 39 places, which even if we're looking at 1.2 or 1.3, that's still under 56, correct?
But it, but the ordinance states one off-street parking space for each room plus one off-street parking space for each 400 square feet of space devoted to accessory uses, so devoted to his thing.
So what is, do we not even have the required parking number for this?
I'm sorry, I don't have the, I don't have the plan.
We don't have any accessory usage, so it breaks down to one.
And how many, and how many rooms?
Thirty-nine.
Thirty-six?
Around thirty-six or.
Total or new rooms?
Thirteen and twelve.
Thirteen and new, 12 new and 13 existing?
Thirty-eight.
Thirty-eight.
Okay. Twenty-six, that's, that's eight, 38.
Did you already paint the new spaces?
No, so the parking lot has been paved because there's 20 current rooms now.
Oh, so here's.
We're eliminating some of the rooms and of course, you gotta move everybody out, build up and put the people back.
So here's the other thing, one that we also take in account the, the restaurant in front of that, correct?
Correct.
So there is a restaurant, there's an Indian restaurant with a rooming house above that. So that's why he's not getting the number of parking spaces that he needs. It used to be Spataro's?
Yes.
So why is there nothing to not have data on?
I'm sorry.
Why would that not be in the packet?
There's not even a variance on our list for the parking.
No, yeah, it's the, it, this all generated from the.
Expansion alteration?
No, no, the second one. Where are we at? Where are we at? Yeah. Because I wanted to know what that meant, but then it just opened up a hole. So can we even rule on that if we don't know where the property line is or how many parking spots are even being put in? I guess we can. And if it turns out, like we can say, yeah, make your smaller parking spots. Why would I care? But if the line then ends up moving and he loses parking spots and then he doesn't have enough, he would have to come back before us for another variance. Is that correct?
Correct. I mean, he's not going to be up with the dispute out there lying. Zoning will not make a decision on this with, you know, with the dispute as to whether or not he owns that, that driveway to, to make it parking space.
To say, to clarify the answer with the parking. So when we first came to them, they already said, well, we had enough spaces, but we added more spaces for the additional. But Steve said, of course, you can't build on top of nobody, so we have to move everybody out of there. So instead of having the 20 units, we're going to have none and then we're only adding 26 over the 12. So we're not, we don't really need, if you look at it now, many people don't park there. Every single one is, all 20 of them is filled with probably two people and multiple people, but most people for that price can't really afford a vehicle. So we spoke to them about it and they said this is what we had to do to get there. But for the rear setback, the building has been there over 60 years. We can't move the building and it's in between, can't like physically take it up and move it somewhere else. So that's why we was asking for the request.
So I will agree with him on that. I mean, we already discussed about the rear setbacks. He does have hardship, show hardship for that because it was there. But I don't, I guess I'm not following you, Roz, on right. When you do the construction, obviously you're going to have to move the existing people out of there. For safety reasons, for nothing else but safety reasons. But I don't understand how that decreases than the number of your parking spaces. That's just a temporary situation until you're finished the construction.
There, currently, there's enough parking for everyone there. So even if we didn't add any more parking, we would have enough. And then the spaces over the motel or over the restaurant would be vacated prior to completion of the other place. So we would lose the tenants over there and not rent to them at all.
But it's the use that it is. Right now, that restaurant is a rooming house over top of a restaurant. That's, it doesn't matter if no one is there, it still constitutes, you have to share that parking. I mean, you just, you have to share it. So, but it's, it's, so his, hold on a second. Let me bring this back up. So the variant, the first variance for the expansion alteration replace of a nonconformity, that's, that is what it is. And, and the setback for the rear. Now, what's in question now is the side setback to extinguish the lot line, he would need the side setback, so that proves that is not hardship. But then the dimensional figure is, he's not going for, the variance is the dimensional requirements for the parking. So it's the way that they are. Yeah, it's the way that they are in there. So you're right, it's not really the number, it's just the dimensional. But does that play into whether or not, we just got, I just, we just got the call most recently from the neighbor. We didn't hear, we've been, like Roz said, we've been doing this for almost two years now. And we, you know, sliced it, diced it, did this, did that, did this way and that way, this case scenario, that case scenario. And what was it, two weeks ago? A week ago?
Like two weeks ago when I sent the.
Yeah, it was when.
The postcards.
Monte, well, no, yeah, when, when he sent out the, the postcards to the adjacent neighbors and they got this postcard, then they contacted us and said, nah, I don't think, you know, that this is the right, where their lot actually is. And for us, that is not for us to decide. That is between the, the property owners. We don't determine lot lines, we don't order surveys, we don't do any of that here at the city. The property owners do that. So it's their responsibility to do that. And, you know, if they, I don't, I have to honestly say, I've never had anybody that where it came down to the, the exact hour of the meeting to say.
But you said zoning would not make a decision if that wasn't?
They're probably not going to because, right, because if there's still a dispute over the property line. I mean, would you venture to say the same thing?
So until that point, until that point is settled.
So these don't affect the property line, the rear setback and the side, the side setback because there's, what she's saying is the side back is because it's built between our two lots, not an additional parking that they're referring to. But we did have a survey, a professional survey done. And like I said, we had the top realtor in York County do our paperwork. So they're reviewing it to see who's at fault or what happened during that. But we've been two years now going through all of the process.
So until that lot line is, is settled, what effect would these variances have on?
So it's two different, it's two different lot lines that we're referring to.
Yes.
We get that. The three of them are easy peasy. It's just the one that we're talking about that then would affect the parking because it may affect other variances that you would have to get.
Correct, yes.
That's what happens if it leaves here. It just sits and gets tabled by zoning. Do they, and then if it changes, does it bounce back to us if there's another variance needed? So is there value in us pushing it to zoning if things could completely change and it would come back to us anyway?
Correct. So it's not gonna, even if it comes back that worst case scenario, that the furniture store owns the piece of property he's talking about, that takes out his spots where right now the dimensional variance is there because they're the new spots, okay? So that takes that out of play, which then now it's going to take his, instead of dimensional variance, it would now turn into the number of parking spaces that he would need to, that would need to be required for the number of hotel rooms, motel rooms.
Yes.
I guess when you're building up now, it becomes a hotel instead of a motel, I'm not sure. But the other ones, the, the side setback is the only thing that we said on there is he does not show hardship because that lot line, he can extinguish. He could have that extinguished and have one lot, but that has nothing to do with the furniture stores.
We are very aware.
The rear one, he, he shows hardship because it's already been there. Kind of, is that kind of, trying to simplify things as much as I can.
So your suggestion would move forward?
I can't suggest what you do at all, basically. I mean, I'm just laying the facts out there. If you move forward, if you vote on these to, for, to recommend approval or denial or however you put it, so if you would recommend approval and then the lot line, I mean, the, if it, if you recommended approval and the neighbors don't actually own that, then he would have enough parking spaces and it's just the dimensional, dimensional part of it. As far as the other variances are going, we just gave the staff review and the one that doesn't show hardship. So, but if it comes back that the furniture store does own that part, that piece, you know, I don't know. I mean, it does, I don't know. Then now they have to, a whole nother variance, a whole different variance for the number of parking spaces. They're not going to be disorderness.
So that last scenario, the last scenario that will not affect anything that we're doing tonight?
Yes, it will. If you vote on, if you're recommending approval or denial for the last, I mean, I'm sorry, for the second variance on there, that dimensional, the dimensional requirements, he does not meet the dimensional requirements on the new parking spaces in which Ms. Nyman, right? Ms. Nyman came for the, for the adjoining or for the neighbors, for the furniture store. So if it comes out that he, it is his property, then he still will need the variance for the dimensional requirements because it doesn't meet the dimensional requirements for the number of parking spaces that he needs for his expansion up. If it comes out that the furniture store does own that, now that, how many did we say, Roz?
10 or 12.
10 or 12 parking spaces are like they're not even there, like he doesn't have those. So now, now it won't be a dimensional variance, but a number of parking spaces.
Yes.
Just pass it. If they have to come back, they have to come back.
So how you want to proceed is up to.
If we move forward on these and that second scenario comes true, he's going to have to come back. If we move forward on these, and that second scenario comes true, he's going to have to come back, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
I can't, but I can't, at this point, because I, like I said, I've never had, I've never had this happen, this type of thing happen. So I can't say, you know, I know, I know that when it comes to zoning, even if they hold this over till they get a decision, that it, you guys are recommending, a recommending board, and they don't actually, you know, need the.
I got a, I got a question. They, they told me above the restaurant, I told them I wanted to vacate and not use those units there so that it would be plenty of parking that we have there, but they're saying that I can't. Isn't this something that can be put into the record and say, we can approve this, but these places must be vacated and cannot be reoccupied with the approval of this rear setback? Because the purpose of doing the rear building, which they have as well, is we're going to tear down the front building, but we didn't get to that point, but we did have the meetings with it. So the future is the front restaurant and motel above that will be tore down completely. And that's going to be on the land development plan. But the phase one section, we had in the meeting, that was just the rear to get the plans reviewed, to go through the plans, and the start on the construction, which everything takes time. So we did have a meeting with the city and we did let them know that, but they said they couldn't approve because the eight units are there.
When you, when you tear down that building, are you planning on just using that as parking?
Correct, so they do have that planned as well.
So what we suggested to Mr. Dean initially, very first, was to do everything at one time. Get the land development subdivision, tear down that front building, and then it would be, it would be less complicated. Let's just put it to you like that, but be much less complicated. He stated he was not ready to do that at the time, that he wanted to do this in two phases. And so this is why it is as complicated as it is. Because, and I, you know, and I get it, you know, expenses or whatever the case may be, but, um, so this is why it is like this. And, um, at the end of the day, when he does phase two, then, you know, this week, all of these things would be taken care of, with the exception of the neighbor. Other than that, you know, so I'm looking.
Is the intent to tear down that building before you open this property?
Correct.
And will there be people living in that, uh, rooming house above the restaurant during the construction?
And over the restaurant, but not the rear, correct. So the, it takes probably three to four years before the construction is complete of the rear because we have to take the roof off and very gently go through the building without tearing apart the build on top of it. And in that time, the taxes are probably 36,000 a year. The front section is going to help pay for the taxes while the construction is being done. When the rear is done, then we'll tear down the front because we'll have, you know, the rooms to justify.
So now I'm confused. I'm not sure what you just exactly said, but initially you said to vacate the rooming house use above the restaurant.
Correct.
Now you're saying no, you're not saying no, you're saying no because that's going to pay for your construction.
The restaurant in the rear, before we actually need the parking, we would have the people there. But once we need the parking or more parking, and then we want to do the future development, the front building would be tore down completely.
Correct, but in the interim of that, you're doing phase one, so you currently have a restaurant there.
Correct.
And you currently have a rooming house above the restaurant.
Correct.
So if, you know, I was just here looking.
We're eliminating the 12 units, emptying the 12 units in the back, and we wouldn't use.
Right, for the hotel, but it's, that's just temporary until you're fully, until you build. So that's a temporary situation. You can't just vacate a use and then bring it back. So, so I get, I understand completely the safety issues. So you'll give them either maybe another space in one of your other places or whatever, a voucher of some sort, to they can, until the construction is done. But it still is holding that you have a restaurant and you have a rooming house above the restaurant. So that's where your parking issues come in. And we had already talked about all of this, that if you did everything all at once, and I get it's very expensive, that, um, this, we wouldn't be having this conversation right now. So, but he doesn't want to do that, I mean, he's, he's not prepared to do that, so this is phase one. Okay, so phase one, the only, the only thing that we gave in there for staff review was he couldn't show hardship for the side setbacks because he can extinguish that. But it's up to you, I mean, and if he doesn't, if it doesn't hold true, then he doesn't need a dimensional variance. He just wouldn't, he would need a number of parking spaces variance.
All right. Did you have anything else you want to add?
Been working on this for several years, spending a lot of money and spinning in circles, so.
Anyone else that would like to address this case? Hearing, do we have a motion on the variance for upward addition?
I recommend approval of a variance for an expansion alteration or replacement of non-conformity as defined in section 1306 dot O1 dot C dot 2C at 1239 Roosevelt Avenue.
You don't even need to vote if everyone's.
We have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Rule call, please.
Johnson.
Aye.
Velez.
Aye.
Burgos. Davis.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Gaines.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Is there a motion for the variance appeal for proposed parking?
I recommend approval of a variance for dimensional requirements of new proposed parking as defined in section 1309 dot O3D at 1239 Roosevelt Avenue.
Motion a second, further discussion. Rule call, please.
Johnson.
Aye.
Velez.
Aye.
Burgos.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Gaines.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Do we have a motion for the variance for, for the rear setbacks?
I recommend approval of a variance for the rear setback as defined in section 1303 dot 14 at 1239 Roosevelt Avenue.
Motion a second, further discussion. Rule call, please.
Johnson.
Aye.
Velez.
Aye.
Burgos.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Gaines.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Do we have a motion for the variance for side setbacks?
I recommend approval of variance for side setback as defined in section 1303 dot 14 at 1239 Roosevelt Avenue.
Any further discussion? Rule call, please.
Johnson.
Aye.
Velez.
Aye.
Burgos.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Gaines.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, I appreciate you, girl.
Have a good evening. Our next case is six dash 2025 dash Z dash S E. Dash V, 222 South Pine Street.
Okay, applicant Sam Lap, 398 Red Hill Road, Hickway, PA 17565. The owner, Amos Stolzfus, 621 White House, GAAP, PA 17527. Zoning district is UN2, Urban Residential Neighborhood District. The summary, applicant would like to convert a single-family dwelling to a two-unit, multifamily dwelling. Variance appeal one, applicant seeks a definition variance as defined in section 1304 point 01 dash 1 point 02 point 002A since the proposed use does not meet the ordinance requirement of a conversion of, conversion from industrial, institutional, or commercial. The property is a single-family home. Staff have reviewed the variance provision in 1311 point 10D. Therefore, staff recommends denial of a definition variance to allow two units for the property at 222 South Pine Street. As the original intent of the property was a single-family dwelling. Variance appeal two, the applicant seeks a dimensional variance as defined in section 1301 point 01 through 1 point 02 point 002 since the proposed density is less than permitted by the zoning ordinance in this district. Staff have reviewed the variance provision in 1311 point 10 point D and finds the property is not big enough for the proposed two units. Staff recommends denial of a dimensional variance to allow two apartments for the property at 222 South Pine Street. Variance appeal three, the applicant seeks a variance to the special exception condition that the property has not been vacant for two years as defined in section 1311 point 11C, subsection one. Therefore, staff recommends denial of a variance to the special exception condition of the property being vacant for two years for the property, 222 South Pine Street. Special exception one for the use, zoning ordinance permits multifamily conversion from a different use by special exception in this, in this zoning district as defined in 1301 point 1, point 1, point 02, point 002. Staff have reviewed the special exception provision for this property. Therefore, staff recommends approval for the request for a special exception to allow multifamily dwelling at 222 South Pine Street pending all variances are approved.
Good evening, could you provide your name for the record?
Sam Lap.
And can you give us more details on what you're planning here?
Sure, so I bought this property from a gentleman by the name of Rod Bosserman. It would have been in fall of '23. I had bought a few more properties from Mr. Bosserman, and I had told, I had been in contact with the title company and just to make sure, and the other people involved, to make sure this was actually a two unit. They did confirm back with me that it was. Later I found out that they did check with the, I believe it was the county tax records that it had showed as a two unit. So I did purchase the property. One year later, I decided to sell the property. And a week before I sold, I was aware that it is not zoned as a two family, it is zoned as a single family. So I reached out to the prospective buyer, I told him the situation. I told him at that time, let's move forward with the sale. I will, you know, go to the planning commission and see what I can do, see if I can get it approved. If not, I'll have to buy it back, just because he, he had already had costs incurred to buy the property with the appraisals and other situations. So that's why I'm here tonight.
I'm curious, is this particular property landlocked? I mean, do you have parking spaces in the back?
Yes.
I knew some of those areas, those homes over there didn't, that's why I wondered. And you stated in, in your application that this has been rented out for 10 to 20 years?
So that was a rough guess based off of how Bosserman operated. I don't know exactly when he did this conversion. That was a rough guess, just based off of the kitchen cabinets, you know. Obviously, there was two living quarters and sometime that was made that way, so that was just a guess. It very possibly was longer.
Who told you? You say that you were about to sell it, and then someone informed you that it was in fact not a multifamily. Who informed you of that?
So I had a, I had a two-meter electric that I wanted to get into three-meter because I had to get it on the, on the common area. And then we initially got the permit, I'm trying to recall how that was. We initially got the permit, and he had, he was doing some work on it, and he applied for inspection or something, and that's when he was told that this is not a, a, a two-family. So that's when, I was trying to get the, the, the work done before I sold, and that's when I found out that. But in, in this prior time, we had city inspections go through and everything was fine. So there was, I guess, you know, a couple people missed it, maybe, I'm not sure.
So it was a currently inspected two apartments?
Yes.
By the city?
Yes, so Sherman Property Management manages this property, and the city had walked through, I'm thinking it was in the spring, this, well, it would have been '24 spring. And usually sometimes, you know, hay smoke detectors, you know, whatever, just to make sure, but everything passed. You know, as they inspected it, as, as, as a two-family.
At the risk of opening another can of worms, can we have clarification on that?
It was inspected?
So Mr. Lap was sold the property as he stated, you know, as a two-unit, then he sold it. When he sold it, and I guess you're, the gentleman that you sold it to, if I'm correct, was getting the third meter put in?
No, that was me getting the third meter in.
Okay, from our records, it was inspected January 31st of 2024, and it was a one unit. So from January 31st of 2024 till now, somehow I got an extra unit put in there.
So if I, if I can just, it, okay, so it did get inspected. I don't know, I guess, I guess with what, his records, it got inspected as a one unit, but I just know that it got inspected. That's, that's all I know, I didn't.
And when, when it was inspected, it was two units?
Yes.
We can't even get our crap together, let alone asking other people to get crap together.
No, all the records indicate it's just one unit. I don't know who it was inspected by, but it wasn't the city that it was inspected by for, because it just states one unit.
Is there an inspection record for the year previous? What year did you buy it?
'23, it would have been September '23.
So it's been marked as one even before that guy sold it to you?
But you also know, you acknowledge that it was sold to him as two, correct?
We're not sure. I don't know how, I just know when they, whatever they stopped of his, that's when they directed him to zoning, saying you need to get it zoned for a two-unit and everything like that. So then he came in and started doing the paperwork, and we started getting him prepared to come to the meeting and everything. But from all the inspections I've seen from the last two times, from 2022 and 2024, it's listed as a one unit.
So, so to, when I had bought it, they had, when I first talked with Nancy, she had said that sometimes the county, I believe it was the county that don't call it accurately, that I have to call into the city. Because I had, I had told the title company to check on this, and they had told me it looks like it's a two unit. So that's, that's what I was going by, but then Nancy said I have to make sure that I always call into the city because sometimes those don't line up.
And is your sale final with Mr. Stolzfus?
Yes. Yes.
So it would create a hardship to buy it back then?
Yes.
And your website is the city's website or the county is saying it's a single family?
When he called the county, the county had it listed as a two unit, multifamily. But even if we're going back to the old owner that he actually bought it from, it still says one unit on every inspection report.
On the city's records.
On city's records.
Not the county's.
Not the county's. The county's tax assessment, it'd be wrong most of the time, and that's why we're trying to tell people now to start calling the city to get the accurate number of units.
So the county knew it had two units. The city didn't know. So as you and I had spoke about, it's that, and we're trying to educate people in word of mouth going forward, that even if it looks like a two unit, make sure you call someone here at the city. We'll get you to the right person. Even real estate agents oftentimes, and if you go by the York County assessments, they don't always change it. It doesn't, you know, the previous owner doesn't change it, or it was way back when, and then owners going forward just never got it licensed and inspected with the city. If the property is in the city, it's whatever the city has it licensed and inspected as, not the county or anything else.
Did you have anything else you'd like to add?
No.
Would anybody else like to address this case? Hearing none. Do we have a motion on the variance to allow two units?
I make a motion to recommend approval of a variance, the definition of multifamily conversion from a different use as defined in Section 1304 dot 01 dash 1 dot 02 dot 002A. It's probably at 220, 222 South Pine Street.
Second. Motion second. Any further discussion? Rule call, please.
Johnson.
Aye.
Velez.
Aye.
Burgos.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Gaines.
Aye.
Moore.
Do we have a, motion is approved. Do we have a motion for the dimensional variances?
I make a motion to recommend approval of a dimensional variance for multifamily conversion from a different use as defined in Section 1304 dot 01 dash 1 dot 02 dot 002 to include conversion of a single-family home into two units for the property at 222 South Pine Street.
Second. Any further discussion? Rule call, please.
Johnson.
Aye.
Velez.
Aye.
Burgos.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Gaines.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Do we have a motion for the special exception conditions property?
I make a motion to recommend approval of a variance to waive the special exception provision that the property must have been vacant for two years as defined in Section 1311 dot 11C1 for the property located at 222 South Pine Street.
Second. Rule call.
Oh, hold on, I'm sorry. Johnson.
Aye.
Velez.
Aye.
Burgos.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Gaines.
Aye.
Moore.
Aye.
Motion is approved. Do we have a motion for the special exception to allow multifamily?
I make a motion to recommend approval of a special exception to allow multifamily use as defined in Section 1304 dot 01 dash 1 dot 02 dot 002 for the property at 222 South Pine Street.
Second. Any further discussion? Rule call, please.
Johnson.
Aye.
Velez.
Aye.
Burgos.
Aye.
Davis.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Gaines.
Aye.
Moore.
Motion is approved. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
Do we have any comments on, on our meeting, our joint meeting that we had as far as?
Everybody thought, well, I got a lot of comments from council and zoning people, and they were very pleased. They thought it was, for the first one was productive and that we're on the right track.
Anyone on the commission have any comments? We stand adjourned.